Are you going to the January? Hi, Ken. The January meeting? I'm not.
In the city?
Yeah.
No.
No, I didn't.
Good evening and welcome to the regular town board meeting for the town of Tustin for December fourteenth. I'll call the meeting in order. Please join me in the pledge. For the payment of bills, the general account expended eighty-three thousand eight hundred and three dollars and twenty-one cents. The highway one hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. The water thirty thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. The sewer district thirty thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the lighting district five hundred and six dollars and twenty-one cents for a total of two hundred and fifty-four thousand fifty-one dollars and twenty-six or thirty-six cents. A little higher this um. Retirement was paid and the end of the year health insurance and allowances were also paid.
I didn't see anything wrong with the bill, so I make a motion when we adopt the bill.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? I opposed. Division reports. Highway utilized five hundred and fifteen point eight gallons of diesel fuel, which was for highway use. Point eight gallons of gas was uh for highway or was uh for non-highway. They patched holes on dirt and paved roads. They replaced driveway pipes on Evergreen Lane. They made sand and salt mixture for the winter. They repaired washouts on Swamp Pine Grap- Cray Pond Hoffman. They put all summer equipment away for the winter and they got the remaining trucks ready for the winter. They're out two times for snow. Water and sewer received twenty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents reimbursement for the apprentice through New York Rural Water Association. This is money that was used to repay the salaries of the hired men. Completed monthly drinking water and wastewater sampling and reporting. Made adjustments to the chlorinator at the sewer plant as needed to maintain the federal and state standards on the effluent wastewater and water meter readings every Wednesday in the month of November. They attended a class provided by the New York Rural Water Association and several webinars for sewer and water education. Overline pumped out sludge from the dosing tanks. They removed sludge and replaced fabric around the sand beds. Replaced two broken curb valves at ninety-six Kirk Road with the help of Tom Koachi. They marked out water and sewer lines for one dig request. Had a class on chemical handling by the New York Rural Water Association. They dug up a seventy-foot section of water main to add insulation at the end of Second Avenue. Roofed water meter and turned water off to one location. Made a new caustic soda discharge line at the sewer plant due to the old one clogging up. Made repairs to some leaking fitting well number three. Responded to a call about no water on Kirk Road after investigation found water pressure to be good at the meter determined was an issue with the plumbing in the house. Replaced one old water meter with a new meter, inspected one more water meter at a house, repaired leaking hydraulic fitting on the snowplow. Total money received for the water department was six thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Total received for the sewer department was sixteen thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and cents. Building Department and Code Enforcement conducted sixteen construction inspections, one certificate of occupancy, one certificate or nine certificates of compliance. Eight building permits, three new homes, one accessory building garage, two renovations alterations addition. One renovation alteration, commercial construction, one roof replacement. Seventeen C of O and violation searches. The building inspector and clerk attended the webinar training on November twelfth on outcomes of ICC Tallwood Ad hoc Committee Proposals and Discussions. Money is collected by the office from November one to November thirtieth, seven thousand fifty-four dollars and ten cents.
Which is the highest number I think I've ever seen.
Yeah, uh, two months ago is a little over six thousand, but it's been up pretty well. I do not have the assessor's report on me, so. Did. Let me see. Sue with the Upper Delaware.
Um, Evan's here tonight.
Oh, Evan, how are you? You're on. I'm gonna have you come up. Kind of close enough that they can hear you.
Alright, so Upper Delaware Council Meeting last week, we had Darrell Pierce.
If you can do a favor and just face the board because these two facts on the table.
Face these guys?
Yeah, okay, you're reporting us.
Alright. Uh, Darrell Pierce from the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission did a presentation on the northern snakehead and invasive fish species in the Upper Delaware Corridor. Um, basically the takeaway is if you catch this fish or see one, catch it and do not put it back in the water, kill it and report your harvest to Fish and Game uh with either State or National Park Service. There's been five reported in Upper Delaware Corridor. And their outlook is that they may or may not enjoy the habitat, so they might not thrive. That's what we hope for. Um, the UDC fiscal sustainability study presentation by consultant Michael Crane took place. It's excellent data that supports facts that are structured and funded. UDC will shed another employee in eight years. It is, it's my belief that towns have mixed and various opinions of the UDC but prefer that it continue to exist. So in future, UDC, the UDC may be asking for support from towns, but we've made, uh, we have not yet analyzed this study. Uh, this is, uh, that was Susan's comments on that presentation. Uh, the Delaware River Basin Commission, public comment period on amendments to special regulations on high-volume hydraulic fracturing. Proposed regulation came to importation of wastewater into the basin and exportation of water from the river to fracking operations elsewhere. UDC Director drafted comments from you, from the UDC. Uh, since there was not a consensus to approve, our comment letter was deferred to January meeting. Those who want to comment are referred to the DRBC website. Written comments due by January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Old Business follow-up. Skinner's Falls, Mylinville Bridge, PennDOT has released their planning and environmental linkages study for a thirty-day comment period from December eighth through January eighth. UDC staff is preparing a comment which will be reviewed at tonight's Worm Committee meeting. Those who want to comment, PennDOT's contact person is Heather Gerling. For more info, you can, how to comment, you can ask Ashley at the UDC for the contact or me. The comments that come out of tonight's Worm Committee would be an excellent template. The Federal Railroad Administration responded to an inquiry about a damaged culvert and there was a positive outcome with continued dialogue happening. Uh, things are looking good on the railroad. Uh, and then the Ten Mile River Access per National Park Service Superintendent Joe Salvatore. The land acquisition request is still active, but there are no federal dollars until the federal budget is approved. Um, and there's one more thing to add to that is my understanding that the DC is also, the New York State DC is also looking into buying that property, so. Those are, that's pretty much it. Most of that was prepared by Susan. Thank you, and I'm just here to read it to you.
Any questions, Brandon? Free.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna walk back one to uh the assessor's report. Uh, for November, all the deeds and the computer info is updated and the disc sent in for the portion for the January tax bills. Uh, some annual exemption review renewals have started to trickle in. It appears that the hold on age exemptions from twenty-twenty will no longer be in effect. I will be sending and processing age exemptions for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, deed filing has been mild for November. Uh, the assessor is gonna have uh appointment hours in order to do the uh aged exemptions and that information will follow shortly. Brandy with the Energy Committee?
There you go. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Can you hear me now? Yeah? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So Tustin Energy Committee report December twenty-twenty-one. Um, the horse update, we took delivery of our food scrap digester, the horse, from Seattle on January twenty-first. We had a virtual ribbon cutting on Earth Day, April twenty-second. We spent the summer commissioning the unit. We started to process food waste from local restaurants in late August, early September. To date, we've processed organic material from the Heron, the Botanist, the Blue Fox, Pete's and two queens in the laundry are also interested in participating once the operations continue. Um, we're now ending our first three months of the Tustin Horse Operations with many lessons learned. Um, nearly a ton of food waste processed from local restaurants. The first full tote of probiotic plant food, which is two hundred and seventy-five gallons and uh was produced and uh production of our own renewable energy as well. We've had, um, we've also been working with the Narisburg Ecumenical Food Pantry to ensure that all edible food is being donated to feed people first. We thank the Center for Eco-Technology for being a vital partner on that project. Um, our local SUNY Green Technology Department is interested in scheduling a visit. Sullivan County Recycle Staff visited on Friday, November nineteenth and then featured the Tustin Horse on its Facebook page. Um, with the first full tote of the probiotic plant food, we are finalizing local interests and market um for this valuable output in twenty-twenty-two. This year, the TEC has given away the liquid plant food for uh to contributors for free. Um, we've been, we've been contacted by many communities interested to learn from our efforts. Tustin continues to be a role model community for others and making a positive climate impact. We are offsetting climate change here and now. And lastly, the soft plastic recycling in twenty-twenty-one. Residents and businesses in the town of Tustin collected and dropped off five thousand three hundred and twenty-one pounds um of soft plastic waste to be recycled into outdoor decking for and furniture. Now, instead of going to a landfill, it is recycled. A huge thank you to everyone who recycles their soft plastics. Thank you.
I do. Board have any questions for Brandy? Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
Do you have anything for grants?
No, I have nothing.
Zoning update committee. One thing is the meetings are held twice a month. On the first and second Tuesday of the month. The new time will be from two PM to four PM and they are open to the public.
Not the first and second. Not the first and second Tuesday, right? It's every other Tuesday.
First and third, I'm sorry.
First and third, did I write first and second?
Uh, I read first and third, I knew, or first and second. The meetings are held twice a month on the first and the third and the new time will be from two PM to four PM.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, moving into old business, three point one, local law number one and local law number two. The town clerk has received the following conditions on December the sixth, reviewed and compared the names to the voter registration list provided to the town clerk by the Sullivan County Board of Elections. Petition for a referendum on licensing and establishing retail cannabis onsite cannabis consumption. And petition for a referendum on licensing establishing retail cannabis dispensaries. Is it signed and sealed by the clerk? We'd make a motion to accept the certificates for the town clerk in accordance with the requirements of section twenty-four sub one sub A of the Admissible Home Rule.
I make them out.
I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I, opposed?
I'm thinking about that is gonna be at the.
I'm sorry.
That the um will be at the.
This will be uh on the ballot for the November of twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Where are you?
I don't know, I was on the first and second Tuesdays. Three point two uh septic bids. Uh, no bids were received, so we're going to put that out for a rebid. Bids are to be sent to the Tustin Town Clerk two-ten Bridge Street, Narisburg, New York. One-two-seven-six-four before noon on January seventh, twenty-twenty-two. It should be clearly marked twenty-twenty-two pumping and removal disposal of filter sand bed. This will be opened at the regular monthly meeting on January the eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, starting at six-thirty PM. This will only be accepted on an official bid form. Work will reserve the right to reject any and all bids.
Be twenty-two, no?
Twenty-twenty-two is. Didn't say that this time, though.
Said what was there?
I would make a motion to authorize for the rebid of the pumping and removal disposal of filter sand bed.
Make that motion.
I have a motion, a second? Second, Bruce, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Uh, old business on our smart cities grant, there's a breakdown of what that is. Um. Have completed design of the smart cities portion of the project. The cost proposals are created to recommend the following scope of work to be completed. Let's see, seven. Meraki MR eighty-six equal wireless access points with five years of service and management of software. Sixteen years of first-year Adirondack cabling support. Includes the internet backhaul for the wifi.
Excludes.
The breakdown costs as follows: Material, twenty thousand nine hundred and one dollars. Installation of thirteen thousand two hundred dollars. The first year service of sixteen hours of four thousand dollars. With a twenty-four hundred dollar contingency allowance of forty thousand five hundred and one dollar total. The consulting engineers recommend approval of the above scope and the amount of forty thousand five hundred and one dollars. The town was pre-approved for up to a hundred thousand dollars in smart city project with twenty thousand dollars in base grant and forty thousand in matching grant and customer contribution. For the above costs, the matching customer contribution would be ten thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and the grant will total thirty thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. The balance of the available grant would be forfeited unused. Discussion from the board?
So we're gonna get ten thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars? As a grant?
No, we're gonna get, we're gonna pay.
We're gonna pay that. Uh, but then we're gonna lose thirty thousand two fifty-one.
No, the rest of that, the forty thousand dollar cost will be covered by grants except for the ten thousand two fifty-one. Okay, so the Energy Department, the grants that they've got would cover everything above ten thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars, which would be the town's contribution. Okay. I would be looking for a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign this contract, which would cost ten thousand two fifty-one, or discussion?
We need the wifi. I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor?
I.
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 Opposed?
Alright.
I'm going to open the floor for ten minutes of public comment before we go into new business. Mr. Hoffman, um. I guess come on up. Right by that white chair is fine. That way you can be heard through the microphone. Right up there.
First of all, I want to say thank you for everything you do and I'm gonna wish everybody a happy holidays. Getting out in December and having this kind of crowd is quite. Um, I, I talked to Ben about this, this situation and one of the tenors and pillars of town government is to provide for the safety, well-being and health of this community. I think we can all agree with that, right? Yes. Uh, I think even Governor Hokel had passed a recent law uh saying something to the effect that every New Yorker deserves to feel safe, comfortable in their community. That includes creating a uh area reducing noise on vehicles coming from the street. Is everybody familiar with that law that was passed in October? I understand that there was a problem over the summer in the flats. I think a community member came to talk to you about it. That problem has now migrated down to where I live on Black Wax Road. We have individuals racing cars, a red Jetta, a white Ford with a black stripe, a red Mustang who thinks he's a policeman and has flashing red and blue lights at the grill and a uh a black Saturn who are all playing Dukes of Hazzard on Lacko Wax Road, chasing one another. Uh, their mufflers are modified to where they sound like they belong on a F-one car on a racetrack. They're going up and down the roads at four o'clock in the morning, two o'clock in the evening, uh in the morning, that would be the morning. Um, they meet at the corner of Lacko Wax and and Route ninety-seven playing music. And I believe various activities going on because people are coming down ninety-seven, people are coming up Lacko Wax and then they split for other ways. Our community, to me, is changing since COVID. We have a lot of people.
Sorry.
And, no, it's quite all right, sir. I apologize. It's quite all right. And um I've noticed in my home, uh, I get gawkers driving slowly up Black Wax Road looking to see what they can see in the house. That's what's outside. Uh, neighbors have reported to me that they're missing things that were behind their house. Uh, and some of that might be due to that, some of it might be due to just other things. Uh, we have uh a lot of uh what do we call daily rentals on my road. Uh, so there's other people that are not community members, but the real concern is this Dukes of Hazzard group of kids. And I have called the state police numerous times. They've been to my house three times. I've called the sheriff's department four or five times, left messages for the undersheriff, chatter boy to call me and has never returned a phone call. It's not acceptable. I should be able to live in my community in my home and not be subjected to this ridiculous nonsense. I can't even walk up my road and feel safe anymore with one of the dogs. I wanna know what the town board can do. Reach out to your contacts. Reach out to the state police. Reach out to the sheriff's department. Something has to be done before somebody gets hurt. Because my phone calls are getting nowhere and in fact, they're not getting returned. We are supposed to have a state trooper barracks here. They promised to man it several years ago when we were going to uh, the town was in discussion about bringing the sheriff's department here. The state police said if we did that, if we allowed them an opening here in the town so they could use a phone and call it a depot, they would pull out. Well, for all intents and purposes, they've already. You can't get them. And when they do come, it's usually a day later or hours later. We don't have patrol here anymore. And the guys that used to be here are retired. They're gone. I drove past, asked there tonight. Nobody's there. There's no cars there. They may come here and then go over to Liberty or go over to Montessori. We have no protection. You have the ability to put a constable back on. I would encourage you to do that. We have the right to feel safe in our community. Right now, I don't, as a, for, as a veteran, I don't feel safe right now. I don't feel safe.
Well, like I said, the check, I have no problem making some phone calls for you.
I, I would like to see the board start ringing the phones. That's why you're, you're here to help us. One of the pillars of your job is to provide, provide safe. I mean, there's very few services we get here in this community. We got our streets, our roads, we got our local government. We don't get trash collection. We don't have a local constable anymore. We need guys to step up and do something. Please.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Other public comment from the floor? Honda?
Say again, thank you for everything that you do for this town. Earlier, uh, many moons ago, I asked this town to update your application to the ZBA. And I was wondering what the status of that was?
Update the.
Application to the ZBA. We were denied because you didn't have the paperwork or whatever the reason was, but there's a proper application to the ZBA for um evaluating the code enforces decision and that's what the application basically.
I don't know if you're familiar with that. It's a conversation I have to have with Ken.
Okay, I had given samples to Crystal, you remember, of different townships around here that have an actual application to the ZBA for interpretation.
Uh, nothing's been done at this point in time, however, we are in a zoning update and this, I believe, fall underneath the zoning update.
I would appreciate you updating. My second thing is Narisburg vacation group. We are planning on going for another grant this year. We're considering putting a small stone wall at the south side of town. And we were advised that we have to get the ground level. And I was wondering if town guys had anything that could help us level an area that we could put the stone wall on.
Where are you putting it?
You know how we have the welcome sign and then you put that lower bed?
And is this ninety-seven?
Yeah.
Oh.
South.
You said the south side of town?
Town, yes.
I was thinking of township.
No, okay, the south side, welcome side. That lower bed, Trevor says, is just constantly falling in the ditch. So we were considering putting on, on the ninety-seven side of a stone wall ten, fifteen feet long just to help that bed falling in. So.
Talk to Donna, I can.
Reaching.
You can talk to Donna about that.
To see if you could, um.
Yeah.
The ground and that would help us save money.
If anybody's got the equipment, he should.
I'd like to thank you guys, Dave. Okay?
I'm sure he'll be able to help.
Thank you.
Mike Farrell has a question online.
Mike?
Uh, first of all, kind of continuing with the same theme we've already heard, uh, I think it's important for us at this moment to uh thank the outgoing board members. It's the last time they'll be sitting on this particular board. They stepped up, they invested their time and their energy and I just want to express our appreciation to them. Come January, the board will look different, but we should acknowledge the people who are uh attending this meeting for the last time as board members. Thank them for their time. Point number two. I'm not a big fan of committees, as many of you know, but I do believe there was a parking committee created at one point. Uh, is that active and are they meeting and are, is anything being done?
It is active in the next meeting.
They, uh, we tried to get a meeting uh for last Friday, Mike, uh, as an initial meeting. That didn't happen, so I'm gonna try for this Friday.
Thank you. Other public comment from the floor? Brandy?
Hi, um. Am I unmuted?
You're unmuted.
Okay, cool, thanks. Um, I just wanted to, um, just summarize the petition situation. Um, so I went around, got petitions signed, so did Star. Um, and now that I submitted them to Crystal, um, now she gave them to Ken, our lawyer. And because the petition didn't request a special election, the public referendum will be on the ballot next general election. Having a November election will maximize the amount of voters and a special election would cost the town money, so there's no cost for the town to have it on election day, so those are the two good things about this, so. Um, I just wanted to say collecting signatures was a really positive experience. Um, I went to a cross-section of registered Tustin voters and most people said if they can reduce the government from telling me what to do, I'd like the public to decide, not just the five people on the board, with all their respect. Um, I want to thank everyone who signed up. I want to thank everyone who signed petitions. It turned out to be a unifying issue and a truly democratic process. So thank you.
Any other public comment before we move into new business?
And I'd like to comment, yes, please. I just want to mention to Mr. Hoffman, I've been fighting that very same issue since last October, a year ago, this October. I've finally gotten through to two sergeants of the state police that are being responsive to the complaints. They have started scheduling clandestine police patrols, not in the normal areas. And since I believe that they were broadcasting when they would be here over their police radios. And some of the little darlings who are doing the speeding have obviously access to police radio communication. They have stopped to a large degree of announcing when they're going to be here. This past September and October, there were particularly good results. I work on Narrowsburg Main Street all the time. Those cars used to go blasting through there on a regular basis. With the appropriate hand gestures of drop dead to me. That has virtually stopped. They now may go up on Erie Avenue and out up 97, but they are not. Blasting down the main street and they've also stopped the road rally congregations in the Pete's parking lot. Both of those things were because the police started these unannounced visits. I came down to Pete's parking lot one day and there was a state patrol car in the parking row, sitting there. And prior to these complaints down at the parking lot, the people doing wheelies in these trucks, they were raping up their engines. One truck took off out of the parking lot. There was a smoke stack on the top that looked like a Mississippi steamboat. The point is, they are responding to complaints. So please, my suggestion to you would be, don't call them, send them an email. The two people that I've been dealing with, it's Sergeant Hoolan, H O O L A N, and also a sergeant cadet. Sergeant Cadet is in the mamikating barracks and Hoolan, I believe, is in Liberty. But send an email, you've got a paper trail there, and anybody else that has a problem with this, they should also complain. Because our leadership in the town has been made aware of this in the past. And the comments that I get from the police is, oh, we can't do anything unless we catch them doing it. Mr.
Not either. That's the problem.
Thank you, Star.
Okay.
Don't have the sheriff's patrols anymore.
I understand.
We're ignoring the phone calls and we used to have a town constable, which we don't have anymore. And it all boils down to public safety.
Okay.
Public comment. Coming to a town meeting, I would say we can walk on our own roads.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is closed. We're moving into new business. I'm sorry. Oh, come on over. I didn't say, I'm sorry, I apologize. Come up by the white chair so they can hear you.
I'm just going to add that I know Susan was here, she, you know, and she's working tonight, but she also has constant frustration about the. About the noise on Main Street and roaring up Bridge Street from that stop sign. I know I used to feel like when the. I don't want the light to come back, but I do feel like I used to see the constable up there a lot more than we do lately. So I'm glad here Star is having, you know, positive, but, you know, to the extent that we continue to voice as a town and the board voices to. To, you know, people who lease the town, but this is still, still an issue and we do want to see progress on it and what they're doing. I will take Star's advice and start sending emails as well, but I certainly want to add to the chorus of issues that always run down around traffic.
Now, Star is correct, and then a paper trail was a lot farther than a. Than a phone call. New business, 5.1. Motion to allow elected officials to attend the online or in-meeting training and the costs that are associated with that. I don't know if anybody's going to the city or not, but at least this would cover them if they do want to do that. Any discussion?
What's the cost?
The cost of the city just came out. Crystal's got it there. I believe it's, if they stay at the hotel that they're offering, it's approximately $300 a night. There are some other ones that I know.
We went across the street.
That's expensive. And then depending on how many things they sign up for, it is usually $150.
I'm sure they're about the online.
Online is usually five. Yeah, I was gonna say about half the price of. And I believe they've also, I did not get to go through this, but I believe they've also got. Training for elected officials either in Albany or Rochester or Buffalo, or at least they used to.
They used to. I went to Albany, Albany and New York City.
I did share this one via virtual, it's January 67 with two.
I didn't hear what you said.
Except there's, I also share with the two oncoming board members for newly elected training for January 67, and it's virtual.
I move that we approve. The expenses for an elected officials to attend online or in-meeting training.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. 5.2, a motion to set the town board year-end meeting for Wednesday, December 29th. Can we come up with a time on that?
4:00 PM.
4:00 PM, December 29th at 4 o'clock PM. And the town board 2022 organizational meeting for Tuesday, January 4th at 6:30 PM. Meetings will be held in person at the Tustin Community Hall and on a Zoom ID. A second?
It was 4:00 PM, you said?
Yes. I have a second from Bruce. All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Before 5.3, I've got one other one, a request from the Chamber of Commerce. On the 18th of this month, the request to close Bean Street from 4:00 to 7:00 for Noel on Main.
What do you want, a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I move that we.
Thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Presentation to the board. And who are we?
Well, I invited both the Olmonds who had filed a complaint and Mr. Juarez and his counsel. Who appear this evening. It was their pleasure to do so. I believe Mr. Juarez and his counselor here. I don't know that Mr. Olmond is or.
In the Zoom audience? No. Okay, take his presentation. They would like to come up to the board. Yeah, 10 minutes.
If you guys will land it, I can ask.
We'll have you come right up here by the white chair and.
You're doing a fantastic job with that camera.
Thank you. It was three years, six months and two days ago, I stood before the town and voiced my concerns about the Olmans destruction of Cackle Town Pond. This pond is a state and federally protected wetland and is shared between properties. Three and a half years later, this 14 acre wetland.
If you would. Face the board, you're making.
Reduced to mud flat. That ecosystem has collapsed. Given the low water pressure in our road fire hydrant, this body of water was a critical reservoir for the safety of Cackle Town residents. What was a 220 foot beaver dam served as a flood break for residents downstream. Those residents' lives and property have been and continue to be endangered because the Olmans have been allowed to destroy the beaver dam. I wish I was standing here today to address the fact that the Olmans seized and occupied town land for over three years. And file the criminal and civil complaints against myself and other neighbors for walking on that very road. I wish I was called here today to discuss the fact that the Olmans continue to occupy town land and allows them to control the town's three culverts. That are critical to maintaining safety waters, levels in the Cackle Town Pond and Lake Erie. Sorry, I just got a really bad headache. Excuse me, I get it's water. I wish I was standing here today to address the fact that the Olmans have seized and occupied town land for over three years. And file a criminal and civil complaints against myself and other neighbors for walking on our town road. I wish I was called here today to discuss the fact that the Olmans continue to occupy town land that allows them to control the town's culverts. That are critical to maintaining safe water levels in Cackle Town Pond and the Lake Erie. But no, the town is not taking accountability for these issues. I'm here today because what the town has taken seriously is a frivolous complaint by the town bullies to silence me. It is anyone's constitutional right to voice their opinions for or against any candidate political office. Vicky Olmans Kennedy posed a threat to the well-being of this community and I have every right to share my concern with Tustin voters. Including saying the positions I serve in the town while introducing myself. My letter is protected political speech. When three and a half years ago, I stood before the board and voiced my concerns about the destruction of Cackle Town Pond. I was also engaging in free protected speech. From that statement, the Olmans served me with a season to assist. Then they sued me and my neighbors who weren't even present at the town board meeting for defamation. Ah, sorry, I have a crazy migraine. Sorry, guys. This is what the Olmans do. The Olmans have over and over again attempted to silence and intimidate me and anyone who stands up and speaks out against their misconduct. And if that doesn't work, their next strategy is to bury anyone in opposition under lawsuits. So while it doesn't surprise me that the Olmans have made this frivolous complaint about my election letter. What does surprise me is that the town has entertained this matter, insinuated the consequences because I've exercised my constitutional rights. And made themselves complicit to the Olmans tactics of intimidation. The first time I met Bob Olmond, he told me then there he could kill the beavers and drain the wetland. He's done precisely that without consequence. The Olmans have brazenly destroyed private property, town property. And town officials have turned a blind eye, or worse, have actively helped the Olmans in their harmful activities. The situation is a real matter that we should be discussing here today. But here we are. How do we improve the situation? One, let's not let the bullies run this town. I refuse the Olmans complaint in its entirety. It has no merit. I have no interest in taking the town to court over this issue because my friends, my neighbors, the hardworking Tustin taxpayers had to foot that bill. The town should have told the Olmans that their complaint was groundless receipt. If the Olmans move, excuse me, if the town moves forward, they do so recklessly. And if the town moves forward with any consequences against my protected speech, what they are implying is a town residence should pay for the Olmans unconstitutional demands. Two, according to Gary Packer's survey, which was done in close collaboration with the Department of Environmental Conservation. Along with the Sullivan County Real Tax Maps, the town not only owns the portion of the road they recently reclaimed. But our public road includes the first three culverts. If the town had taken responsibility for their property, the issue of the town pond could have been resolved years ago. Without the needless destruction that has taken place, there are simple, harmless and costly effective solutions. That would allow the wetland to thrive and the Olmans to lawfully develop. I offered to install a pond leveler device for your charge. Vicky Olmans thanked me for proposing the solution. Bob Olm, Jane Lussinger and I have had a meeting scheduled to discuss a simple solution. Rather than working towards problem solving, the Olmans chose litigation and the town did nothing. The town needs to take responsibility for its resources. Pay for surveying the portion of the road that Olmans have seized and stop allowing these people to ruin a valuable ecological resource. The protections of state and federal agencies have granted the wetland are only as strong as the people and communities who stand up for them. Three, the town has the ability to pass local resolutions to protect beavers from inhumane death. I'm not against ethical trapping, but I am against drowning rigs where beavers struggle underwater for over 15 minutes before succumbing to their deaths. There is no reason other than cruelty for this type of trapping. The Olmans have employed the most cruel forms of beaver eradication, drowning rigs, blindly shooting into a lodge and blowing up another. We can choose as a community to do better for the wildlife of the monks. We can't go back in time and change what has happened on Cackle Town Road over the past three years. But we can focus on meaningful actions that protect our communities' interests. Rather than waste time on hostile and frankly irrelevant complaints of people who are simply too accustomed to getting their way. Last month at the polls, Tustin voters spoke clearly about the future that they want for this town. And I hope that the town rises to the expectations of voters. That it steps up to protect the natural resources and defend the rights of the community members. And I hope that in three years' time, we could be having a much different conversation. Thank you.
If I may just briefly address the board. Was Mr. Olmond given notice that he had the ability to come here today and make a presentation?
He did.
And he knew that it was on the agenda? I find that surprising because his attorney in our civil case told the court today that this was not on the agenda and that. The board would not be considering his complaint. I'm not sure why he's not here. I'm sure he's watching us now. I would only ask that, I don't really need to add anything to what Mr. Juarez said. Just simply add that I would request that my. December 6, 2021, letter to the board in response to the Olmans complaint be publicly posted on the town website. Vicky Olmnd made her complaint publicly. She stood here and expressed it in a recorded meeting. The letter responding to that complaint should be publicly posted as well, and I thank the board for having this as a public discussion.
I have one question for you. You wish us to post that. I believe I'm within my rights to ask you what your information and belief is to the accusation that you made about me.
What's the basis of that?
You stated.
I said information and belief because I have been given hearsay statements that Mr. Olmond was. Going to that diner to have a meeting with town officials, including yourself. I said information and belief, sir, because I can't, I don't have personal knowledge. And I don't know if that's true. And if it's not, I would apologize to you for making that statement. I don't, I don't have personal knowledge.
I would accept your apology right now.
Okay, I have no personal knowledge. I was told that.
Okay, but before we go posting anything on a website, I will accept your personal apology about putting it in there. And I'm telling you, it's false.
Okay, I, I accept your representation that that was not correct. But that is why I wrote upon information.
So that's your, you're accepting it and apologizing to me for putting it in.
If you're saying that was not true, I apologize for writing.
Thank you.
But I would ask that the letter be publicly posted. And if the board has any questions regarding the complaint, I'm happy to answer that, but I think what Nico said speaks for itself.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
This part, I'm sure. We are going to be entering into an executive session, so we will change the. Number six to the public comments so that people do not have to wait here if they do not want to. We'll have public comment prior to the executive session. And upon exiting an executive session, we will have our closing items. This time I would open. This time I would open the floor to public comments. Do you have anybody on the? This time I'll make a motion to enter an executive session for the purpose of discussing employment history of a particular individual and pending lawsuit.
Quick public comment.
Sure.
Uh, because I see a lot of people here, I don't come to a lot of meetings. I'd just be curious if we can understand who came here in support of the position. But I think it's important to understand that, you know, Mr. Olman had his opportunity to represent his case and so on. And again, I'm not as close to the details of the case, but all I understand is that someone is basically saying, you know, hey, like, I want to be able to, to speak to my community and chose to do through a letter as, as, you know, in, in support of, 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 you know, the election activities. And I, I, I hear there's a large number here. I think it's important to understand who came here to, like, show support for that versus, you know, just here to, to watch the, the general proceeding.
I have a motion on the floor. I have a second from Jill. All in favor? I opposed. You want to go upstairs? Are you?
Okay.
Is that on your recording? For at least one word of the year meeting? Any assistance that you've given?
Happy to do it.
Out, my honor, anyway.
All in favor to adjourn? I oppose. You're done.